So, good evening, welcome. We're gonna start the presentation portion of tonight's session. For those of you who don't watch Town Council regularly, my name is Jeff Gushu. I'm the Chief Administrative Officer for the town. Present tonight, we have Counselor Sandy Dennis and Counselor Madeline Dawes. And I find her worship.
She's in the house.
Okay, she's in her office, she'll be joining us shortly. Town Council decided several months ago that we do a study on transit within the town. We're a fairly small town, and yet we have needs we recognize for transit. The question is, is how do you provide it? In an efficient, cost-effective way? And that's where we bring in the professionals. So, we engaged the Transit Consulting Network. Wolling Beck is representing them on this project, and will be making a presentation shortly, based on the work he's done over the past several months. And I know some of you participated in a consultation in the Health Care Town Hall, and perhaps also participated online through surveys. In any case, I'll step out of the way and let Wolling do the presentation. I wanted to also mention that we are streaming this presentation live on the internet. So, for the duration of his speaking to you in this forum, it will be streamed live. But it will also be available to be viewed after the fact. So, if you wanna see, you wanna remind yourself, and direct other people to have a look at what Wolling had to say, you can find a link to our Ustream channel on our website. So, without any further delay, I will ask Wolling to take the floor.
Okay. Now, this speaker is on?
Those microphones are both on.
Oh, both on? Okay. Welcome, everybody, and thank you for coming. This shows great support for the subject, and also members of the press here. Great to have them here. Can I ask, who is, is there anybody new to these? Were you all at the last public open house? Show your hands, no? Does anybody know who I am? Okay. Might just give you a background, my background. I used to work in the municipality, I used to run a transit system in upper Canada. And, but my career started in Halifax before it became Metro Transit. So, I've been in the business about, almost forty years. And I love doing these rural, smaller system studies. I just enjoy that this small community, especially in Nova Scotia, they have great golf courses. Yeah. So, that's kind of my background. I've been a consultant for, I worked on the municipal side, but also a consultant for the other, my second half of my career. And I was very fortunate to be able to come here and work in the town, as well as the municipality of Yarmouth, too, since I had just finished their study, and there's gonna be, you'll see some similarities there. Okay? And at the end of this presentation, I have a comment sheet. Anything you wanna write down, any suggestions, if there's things that we got wrong, or did what we came up with, what we heard from you. Okay? And there's also a thing that rates the consultant, it says, "Good, excellent, just awesome." So, just pick one of those, okay? So, to start off, this is what the presentation's gonna be about. Gonna talk about the objectives, the work plan that we had undertaken, talk about the service in the past, all the way through, looking at things that we heard from the community, either in person, and through web surveys and hard copy surveys that we did. And then, at the end of it, we're gonna look at the business model. And that, what I mean by that is, who runs it? Who decides how many hours of service there are? Who decides what the fares are gonna be, and so on? And then, an overview of the study recommendations, that Council actually went through this presentation today. So, this presentation, I had a different one for Council, but essentially, it's the same, same as this. So, here it is. What's the best service design? What you had before, or something different? And some of you had gone and looked at the open house boards, and they had some route concepts. So, we'd like to hear back from you about those, what you think. Wanna know the governance? Who's gonna call the shots? What will it cost?
They're having trouble.
Oh, they're having, okay. How do we pay for it? Because transit costs money. So, in terms of the community engagement, some of you had participated in transit focus groups, I think it was in April, I think we got the study launched. And we also met with many Hudson Transit customers, and general members of the public. And also, what I do, when I come to communities, I'll go out to restaurants, and I'll talk to staff about transit, just get what their perceptions are, and so on. So, it's just not, it's formal and formal avenues that we went through. Of course, Hope Dollar Ride, we talked to them, because they're in town providing service now. And also, I was involved with them in the municipality of Yarmouth study as well. Then, of course, municipal councilors, a very warm bunch. I just, they're, I don't know if you've met with them all at once, but it's enjoyable. The community-wide survey, we did a web-based survey, not everybody has access to it. So, what we did is, we went to some seniors' homes, we had the forms available at Town Hall, so people can fill them out in hard copy, and then we would enter it. And we'd had just a phenomenal response. We had two-hundred-and-twenty-five responses, so that is considered a success. That's three percent of the population. So, here's, oops. So, this tells you, we asked this one question, and that was, you know, what's your situation? Are you retired? Do you work part-time? Do you go to school? Do you go to school and work part-time? Are you a caregiver and work part-time? So, you can answer up to two. So, on the right, and I believe that information's on the open house board, so you can look at that. This is the numbers we came up with. Very heavily towards the female side that responded, but, you know, that's kind of typical. And as well as, there were people that owned cars, multiple-car households, or, but I found that thirty-five percent of those that responded, there was no car in the household, or truck, or vehicle of any sort. So, that was interesting. And the other one, about fourteen percent physically unable to drive. So, I asked that question, remember that question? I think in the focus group meetings is, what are the four destinations you wanna see the bus? And those are the numbers. So, the hospital, mall, downtown, Dollarama, Walmart, and Sober's are the biggies. So, we wanna make sure that those routes, those locations are covered. And they were covered well with Huts, and so whatever we come up with here will be covered Now, if we ask that, we asked that question, if service was available, and in some studies, you know, I see people go and say, "Well, if the bus came by, would you use it?" And everybody said, "Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah." But let's be a little realistic. If the bus is available, would you use it some of the time, all of the time, and so on? And these were the responses. So, fifty percent were saying, "Yeah, we'll use it for some of their trips." And what I find, in especially smaller communities, is during inclement weather, people will leave their car, they don't wanna drive out in the ice and snow, and they'll take public transit. Okay? Or late at night, if they, the ice sight's not good, well, if public transit is available, they will take it. So, quite good responses, or very telling responses. Comments received. Oops. Hundred-and-four respondents. So, out of the two-hundred-and-twenty-five that responded, hundred-and-four filled out the comments, and some with four and five, and all printable. Okay? And so, they, we wanna know, these comments actually mirrored what we were hearing in the focus group. So, what the focus group participants were telling us, the general public were also saying the same thing. So, it kind of reinforces where we're going, or where we think we should be going. And at the end of this meeting, you gotta tell me if we're on track or not. Okay? So, it's you that has to tell me. Now, the, one thing I found in reading, and there's pages of them, is that people that don't even intend on using it, know people, other people that were, and actually very positive, saying, "Yeah, we need it. People gotta get out, not everybody drives," sort of thing. So, so here's what we, okay, so we design a route. How do we design bus routes? Well, this is, this is kind of fun, because you're sitting there, you're drawing lines on maps, and it's what I like to do personally. But we use these guidelines. We wanna make sure that up to ninety-five percent of the house, homes are within a five-minute walk, or four-hundred-and-fifty-meter walk of bus stop. And that's walking, I think it's three feet per second, something like that. So, it's four-hundred-and-fifty meters. The other one is, if you've got apartment buildings and complexes, should be within three-hundred meters. Institutions like hospitals, within a hundred meters of the bus stop. So, there's all these things that we look at, that you may not see. And we look at safe travel speeds. Right now, or in the past, Huts had an average speed of twenty kilometers an hour. Okay? And that's pretty good, and we design anywhere from eighteen to twenty-five. So, that tells us how much of the roadway we're gonna cover. Right? And then, we looked at a preference. This is a community bus route. It's not a mass transit route. So, it's okay to take a little longer to get, for the route to deviate to get people from A to B. So, it's not, it's, it's, people aren't gonna sell all their cars just because you got a bus there every eighty or ninety minutes. But it is there to meet a need that's not being met. The, the more direct a route is, the better it is. And that's why we'll talk about that, about that one-way loop that was there before. And we wanna make sure that what we heard in all the comments, we covered, I think some of you were here, and I said, "Here, just draw circles on where you roamed," remember? You said, "We drove little marks on a map, and you told us where to put it." I had all yours on it, by the way, just so you know. 'Cause I knew that you were gonna come to this meeting, and if I didn't... Oops. Once, so here's, this is what was there before. Like, the fact that you had, this is a small community, nine thousand people. They're one of the smallest communities in Nova Scotia with a fixed route service. I mean, that, when I saw that, I thought, "This is, this is awesome." And, because most of them are Dollar Ride, or Hope Dollar Ride-type services, for this, it's very proactive. And, so we found it was a very circuitous, it takes you up to an hour to get anywhere. So, let's say you lived over here on Main Street, and you were going to the hospital, it took you an hour to get there. So, you know, why doesn't the bus go in the reverse direction? So, you're there in five minutes. The van that's used, it's not accessible. A lot of people with walkers, wheelchairs cannot use it. The ridership was declining, and I think that's because he cut back the service a few years ago. Used to carry, I think, twelve-thousand people, passengers, now you're around ten-thousand, five-hundred passengers. And the fares are high, three dollars. But that's considered high, for a small community. Long walk for many residents, especially if you live in here, and limited hours of service. If you're using it to get to and from work, you're only, it's only operating eight hours a day, or, so it's eight or nine hours, so it's not enough. But again, it worked well. He worked with the dollars that were available to him. It was a good service, but it didn't address the needs of a bigger audience. So, we looked at options, and you're free to comment on them, they're up there on the open house board, so you can look at them a little more closely. But just to explain, this is the previous Huts Transit Route, and it's all, you know, it's all one-way. So, these routes here, and it did it, you did it every hour. But if you did this, every eighty minutes this way, and every eighty minutes that way, and so on, then you now can get from A to B a lot quicker. So, it doesn't take you more than twenty minutes to get anywhere in town. That's what that's designed for. It's not every hour, it's gonna be in each direction, it's gonna be every eighty or ninety minutes. But if you lived up here, and you wanna go to the hospital, you can catch either bus. So, you actually have more service. Okay? If I lose any, you know, if you don't, if I'm going too quick, or you wanna ask a question, feel free. Oops. So, what we did, in trying to figure out how, and I'll try to keep it very simple, is that when you run a bus system, you've got, whether you put one hour of service out or not, you've gotta have an office, it's gotta be heated, you've gotta have computer equipment, you've gotta have somebody managing it, you've got to have insurance, and so on. Those are costs that are fixed. And the reason I bring that up is, I'll talk about later, I'll give you the reason later. And then, for every hour of service that's out there, that's fuel, maintenance, oil changes, driver wages and everything, that's what's called a variable cost. So, the more hours you have, that fixed cost stays the same, but the more hours of service you have, the, it only increases by those variable costs, not your office costs. And then, the other challenge we have is, well, if you put the service out, how many people are gonna ride it? So, we used an average of, conservative of five passengers an hour, and said, "Within four or five years, when people, everybody, including Council, sells their cars to ride the bus, then, then, you'll have better performance." Right? So, it takes time to grow, is what I'm saying. It doesn't happen overnight. So, here's what we looked at today, Council. We looked at that twenty-two, there's three options, and there's options in between. It's just three for Council to look at as examples. This is what was approximately provided last year, eight hours a day, eight or nine hours, sorry, eight to nine hours a day of service. And weekdays, it was Monday to Friday weekdays only. And then, the second option, we said, "Let's add almost twelve, twelve-hundred-and-fifty hours to it." So, that would be twelve hours a day, Monday to Friday, be ten hours a day on Saturdays, and then another one that added Sunday service. So, that might be something, you know, that during the tourist months, in the summer months, you might have eight hours of Sunday service or something, you know? Or it could be fifty-two weeks a year. But what happens is, Council spends, has been subsidizing sixty thousand dollars a year, and by, by the third to fifth year, it might even go down if more people rode the system. Okay? It might, but our projections say it would. So, here's, I don't wanna get into the numbers too much, but we looked at, that was the sixty thousand, and we looked at, if we contracted it, we put it out to tender, get somebody in, what would it cost? And we think, just last, it would be about, just around a hundred thousand dollars a year for one bus, five days a week. But if we brought it in-house, and we talked to, we've been in discussions with Hope Dollar Ride for some time, and the Hope Center, and they said, "Yeah, we might be, we'd be interested in talking about running it." So, what would happen, remember those fixed costs? Well, they've already got, so maybe we can go in, you know, we can start with them initially, see how it goes, and keep the cost low. So, that would mean, year one is about the same cost as what it is today. Then, we looked at enhancing it, and that would, in each year, this two-B and three-B goes up to almost a hundred thousand dollars. So, that would be up of another foot, sorry, forty thousand dollars a year. So, what's the implications on their taxes? But in the long term, when people start riding it, then it comes back down. So, this doesn't count inflation, by the way, and if fuel prices go to three dollars a liter. Okay? Now, you gotta buy stuff. Something like that, I think is ideal. So, this one here, that's just a twenty-six, twenty-seven footer, but there are thirty-foot versions, and they're called medium-duty buses. So, they can carry twenty-five to thirty passengers, couple of wheelchairs, reverse-facing wheelchairs, so they can get in and out very quickly. Talking about bus stops, you know, right now, there's some bus stops, but it's flag stop for a lot. Am I correct, people? You just flag down, okay? I think you have designated stops in safe areas, so there has to be a budget to put them out on both sides of the street. Remember, it's going two ways, not one. Bus stop infrastructure, that could be shelters, bus benches, and so on. And we talk about fare collection, and we actually talked about this earlier, before the meeting started. So, a smart card system technology is so inexpensive now, that you have on the buses, you buy a pass, you load some value on it, and you just tap it, and it deducts one fare. And if you pay cash, you pay a premium. So, you used to pay three dollars? Well, if you're paying cash, you pay three dollars. With a smart card, you can pay, you can get onboard for two dollars and fifty cents. So, it gives you a discount, maybe lower, it just depends. And also, that, what it does, it tells, because it's tied to Wi-Fi and GPS and all that, it tells the municipality, how many people are getting on that bus, how many are using it every day. It's, you know, you use, ever heard the cloud computing? You know? All they have to do, anybody can go in and look at what the numbers are, how many people are riding in at what stop, and also, how much money should be in that fare box. So, it's a security feature as well. So, the capital budget, if Council were to buy everything in the first year, it'd be about a quarter of a million dollars, or two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, sorry. And, or they can, they have to deal with it and look at it, "Well, maybe we'll finance it over a number of years." So, that's something that's kind of a next step. It's just that these options were laid out to them, for them to consider. So, revenues. Okay, talk about how much it costs. Passengers, so average fare, two dollars and fifty cents. It could be two dollars, it could be whatever, Council decides. Use a, and we talked about that exact gas fare, sorry, I'm already repeating myself, but bus bench advertising. These benches, you can get generally about a hundred dollars a month per bench, and if you have several of them, we put in, we said, estimated about six thousand, it could be more, but we wanna be conservative. Right? And then, the other one, charter, school board contracts. These are opportunities that municipality has to work with them, to get more people to use the system, you know, like students, taking students instead of the old-school bus to school, so they can make some more money to keep the cost down to the taxpayer. So, there's lots of opportunities. And then, charters, you know? If it doesn't run on, you know, doesn't run in the late evenings, you can charter it for weddings, or what have you. I've known bus drivers' kids, I got married on buses, and we'd take their kids to and from the facilities, and then, of course, there's external funding. Now, the province, there's the federal, at the federal level, provincial level, and of course, the local level. And what's happened in the industry over the years is that everybody's starting to recognize transit as a requirement. So, at the federal level, they're putting billions of dollars into it. Many provinces have committed to billions. Nova Scotia, not a lot. Okay? But they do have some, and it's more for the door-to-door service, not the fixed route service that's we're suggesting here. However, they just brought out a new program, and they're, the town does qualify for some of that funding to help purchase the bus. So, all the costs you see can go down, once the town has sat down with the province and said, "Hey, what can you provide us with?" Because the province, don't forget, you run bus system locally, it's good, it's good for the environment, it's good for the nation, you know, and, so everybody benefits the economy, the local environment, and even the province. So, they're starting to recognize that, the fewer cars they have on the road, the more everybody benefits, and it, so why should it just the local municipality pay for it? They've got a stake in it, so they should help pay, and the federal government does, and they should help pay. And they do indirectly now, more so than they did in the past. I went through a period in Ontario where they decimated, they removed all the funding, and systems fell apart, left, right, and center. And now, they're paying for it. They're all coming back. So, this is what, these are the different programs that are out there. There's gas tax, and I'm not gonna get into detail, but the municipality uses them for roads and other infrastructure, and so on. And then, this is the new program here, that just came out recently, since the study started in April, that I think the town can benefit from. And the other one is the tax, you know, the tax levy. I did that twice, so... Okay. This is what we're talking about. There are different models, but I'm not gonna go through them all. I'm gonna talk about public sector ownership, private sector management. Town owns the assets, that means they own the vehicles, they own the bus stops, they own whatever. So, now, so they own everything, and they've got a financial investment. Before, Hudson, Gary Hudson would go to Council and ask for a sixty thousand dollar grant. So, what we're suggesting is, this become part of the municipal budget, not a grant. So, it's there, and it shows commitment by the, by Council, and, but if they're gonna put it in there, how do they control it? So, by, you have, because they don't wanna hire staff and their own drivers and all this, may as well get people that are out there. And private sector management, whether it's a not-for-profit agency, such as the Hope Center, or a taxi operator, or school bus operator, just a, that, they're still considered private sector. So, that, that I think commits the town, I think the residents, especially you are here, those here today that were Huts Transit customers, will be, rest assured that it's gonna be here to stay. There's some longevity in it. So, here's why we're suggesting Hope Dollar Ride. It doesn't have to be them, it could be anybody, but because they are, the people that use the Dollar Ride service are gonna be, many of them are gonna be the same people that use the fixed route service. They're there now, they have economies of scale, the administration is there, they've just hired another full-time dispatcher, I think? Linda? Yeah? And, oh, yeah, right. Forgot. And, so anyways, there's, there's economies of scale. Remember that? Fixed cost stays there. It's not gonna increase, or if it does, just marginally, if they do it, and now you can provide more hours of service. And then, if they do it, how do you know you're getting a return on your dollar? So, this is where this monitoring equipment, where you know how many people are getting on, you know, and everything is, is gonna be electronically or remotely monitored, and so the accountability's already there, because the technology is there. Okay? It's not, it's not Big Brother, but it gives Council staff, senior staff, the information they need to say, "Are we getting value for our dollar?" And key, it's gotta be rebranded. So, now it's a bus, it's your, instead of a van, you gotta rebrand it. Don't call it Hope Dollar Ride, don't call it Hope, but just make up your own branding and color, so that it's, it's a good marketing opportunity. Now, talk about governance. Okay, governance is, who calls the shots? So, what we're suggesting is an advisory committee, a transit advisory committee, with regional representation. Argyle's done a study. Municipality of Dartmouth, municipality of Yarmouth has done one, Argyle, now the town. So, maybe this community group, the regional econo, regional economic network?
Enterprise.
Enterprise. Enterprise Network might be one way to do it. And then, if Hope were to run the service initially, just start off for a first couple of years to see how it goes, it's one of the quickest ways to do it. Then, they would have a staff member, and Town of Yarmouth would have a staff man or member as advisors or to this, they wouldn't vote. And then, here would be community members at large, providing the direction. And Council controls the... controls the budget, whether to increase service, decrease, and so on. So and I think it has to be more of a regional approach, much like it was back in the eighties. Argyle, I forgot the name of the transit system. Rose, do you remember? Do you remember the name of the Argyle, the old transit system?
Yarmouth.
Okay, there you go. So. Okay. So they they would set, and and then, see, what happens when you buy buses? If the district, the municipal, municipality of Yarmouth buys a bus, if the town of Yarmouth buys a bus, and if Argyle buys a bus, if you buy one bus and you run it in town, you need a second bus as a spare. Because if it breaks down, or it's in an accident, or whatever, you need a spare. So maybe between the three parties, or two of the three parties, would pool the resources, get the buses, and one spare instead of two spares, or two spares instead of three. So that's, that's the idea. So the other one is, that strategy has got to, remember I said earlier, wheelchair accessible? Those people that use the Dollar Ride service that are in wheelchairs, or even cognitively disabled, can learn to use the bus, rather than the door-to-door service. They don't have to reserve it, they can go out there random, it's better on their quality of life and so on. So here's our recommendations. Because the service stopped, the town, should they move forward, needs to apply to the Nova Scotia Utility and Review Board to restart the service. That could take, I'm told, several months. So because the service stopped, if it continued, may not have been the case, but because it stopped. So I know everybody wants it tomorrow. You're looking at maybe a a spring, sometime in the spring, where you can get the service up and going. And, yeah, and then service provider agreement. And there's still, you know, you could still see what you can through Hope Dollar Ride, too. I mean, it's there. Enter discussions with the province regarding funding, and that's for the town. And if, when the report, when I leave here, I'm going to do a final report, and it's going to go to council. That's why I want to hear, this is your last kick at the can, all right? So what I hear from you, and then I'm going to revise, make some revisions. The report goes to council, and it's up to council to approve it in principle and use it as a guide. That's it. So what do you think? All right, thank you so much. And if you have any questions?
You said that it would take maybe, how many months before we find out for sure how we're going to have any plans?
Oh, the decision, the decision will be made by council on whether or not they're, which way they're going to go. Now, they're supportive of transit. I mean, they've got a sixty thousand dollar budget right there. They didn't take it away and put it in somewhere else, it's still there. And so council's committed to to doing something, right? So, yes, your worship.
If you don't agree to hear it from us, and most of council's CEO, we did have that discussion. And and we support transit, just as you say, to find the best way forward, and 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 everything you say tonight is of value to to what it gives to us.
Yes.
There was a question, I forgot to ask today, but actually trying to turn up with, the bus group, and with the municipality or municipality of Argyle, is there going to be a way that each one can connect, so that my students from the county can get telecommunication?
Okay, the question is, those, there's, there are people that live outside the town, either in Argyle or in the municipality, can they transfer onto a local bus? And the answer would, yes, it makes sense, a hundred percent sense. It's, you know, when people travel from A to B, they don't care whether the municipal boundary is there or not. They just want to get from A to B. So they have to cross municipal boundaries, right? So it's just like when you're driving, driving along a road. You don't care what municipality it's in, or where where you crossed it, you're just driving the road. So transit is no different. And that's why more regional reproaches, what's happening right across Canada. Everybody's talking to everybody.
If you're going to transfer, do you have a transfer paper?
If you're going to transfer, do you need a transfer paper? With this system, with the technology, you don't need transfers. That, you you get a card, and that transfer's built in. Yeah.
So they shop at Argyle, and they want to get tickets first, and they're going to have to pay another?
That's, yeah, yeah, you can have, it's called fare by distance, that that's available. Yeah. Yes, Councilor Dennis?
Sorry, can I ask, or maybe just sort of something about possibly municipality or our government, who they could be?
I'm sorry?
We're just talking about Wally, about the timeline, like, there's talk of one time the municipality of Argyle, and they're internally corporate here, they might only be running a couple times a week, so.
Yeah.
You can have a dedicated service to bring students into their campus, unless they're all going Tuesday and Thursdays.
Yeah.
It's going to make the top, and that's where we have to get off road better.
Yeah, that's right. The rural communities that are wrestling with transit for the first time, and it's very, very expensive, because people have to travel great distances, in order to get their foot in the door, they're starting off, and this, I did a study in Annapolis, or Lunenburg, and Bridgewater, and and Mahone Bay, and we said, you know, a couple of days a week. And it was similar to the municipality of Yarmouth, too. There's maybe a couple of days a week, or three, to bring them into town. Because that's what they could afford with, that was their, what they could afford. And then maybe over time, they can increase it incrementally. Maybe there's other funding comes available, allows them to do more. Yes?
Thank you, Wally. And has the municipality considered just to make one or two direct lines into towards the town? Like a commuter station, like a bus line, you know, maybe that would say that?
The municipality's route would, it's it's called a fixed flex route. So it would, it would go hit communities pre-arranged trips, you know, book trips, it would be a bus, and it would, at that time, bring them into town and hit all the major points that the the town bus would. Now, if if you do it right, then they can connect with that town bus, and then go back out. And the same thing can happen in Argyle, too.
Excuse me, did I hear right that it could be spring before we get to bus service?
Yeah, it would take about spring. Primarily, the biggest hurdle will be the Nova Scotia Review Utilities Review Board. That's one hurdle. And you just can't go out and buy a bus. It's not that quick. They take time to build.
The time goes fast.
Yes, yes.
Did you have anything to do with the D C bus, or something?
Uh, yeah, why?
So can they get their bus there?
Oh, that that was, that went up, that went up the arm, and then there's, there's a, yeah. They they actually worked with King's Transit Authority to go into town. And whereas before, they just, they're at the interchange, and they drop people off, or they're in the hospital or something, now they go through town.
Oh, I'm proud of being strange to see my, see my son in Winter, because it's winter.
Yes.
I get to wait, I get on the bus, I'm a manager, this mayor, really, you can pay up, so on. You you don't, he's trying to wait it, and I can go there and wait for three hours?
Yeah, the, in fact, this is what I found.
And there's people traveling on each train, and that are going to end, so waiting, now we have to vote. Let's try to get some bigger type of stuff, take these four wherever they want to go.
It's funny, that's a good.
So we don't go forward and wait back.
I did some work for King's Transit Authority some time ago, and and they, and I guess a couple of years ago as well. But they're, they have the longest bus route in North America. Urban bus route. And they're doing a study now for a community commuter bus from, I think, Windsor or Kemphill into into Halifax. But this, and I know people from here and in the municipality, they'll drive out to Waymouth, hop on the bus, and go.
I do that in Windsor.
There you go.
About three bucks and.
This missing lake, it'd be nice to see it, something go all the way around both ends, right? Yeah. Buses, it's expensive.
And Wally, you had to test this in council project, very council, and that was the first thing you brought up, right? We had the initial meeting with Wally, connecting with King's, because of family and medical practice, you know, the worst tests would be painful. Now that's one of the first things that we brought up, the initial meeting.
And like now, we're both, we're going to work towards.
Yeah. That King's Transit Authority is a success story.
We started this online, right? Remember, it's one week, you would just go a rail, and then it went.
How many units subsided that?
Uh, yeah, there's four or five municipalities.
And they just.
And then, and then some that are added, yes.
So we just have to connect with.
That, that's right.
And 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 get the province onboard. Yes?
Did I understand you to say that the, that one of the sources of income could be transportation, schools, school teams and so on?
Yeah. The question is, one of the sources of income could be transportation of students, or or.
That that was, I understood you to say that, but am I incorrect?
Yeah, you're 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 correct. It's for transportation of students.
But is that the school board is responsible for students?
Yep.
And and they, they would be, I don't think they, I don't think they use charters or or anything that is school-sponsored.
Okay. Here's my experience, because I, we picked up students all the time. If it's cheaper, okay, you have one taxpayer, one taxpayer, whether you pay provincial or local or whatever. So if it's cheaper, and just as effective to use a local transit service than it is yellow school bus, and you have the capacity on it, and the school board can save money, why wouldn't they buy a pass?
Because they're responsible from the time that the student gets on the school bus in the morning, until they deliver it. But that, they're, the the school system is responsible for that student. So letting them go to another place that isn't, doesn't belong to.
Yeah, I'm not a lawyer, so I I don't know how to address that.
We transport special needs students, but we also, with the French School Board, we have a contract to bring some of their students from Carling, because of the higher area, to Yelena. Now that's using power minutes. So if a school.
So the provincials.
And we're, yeah, but as Wally's right, you're saying, as long as you have insurance and custody, my God, and it's cheaper for the schools, they can hire, and they will hire.
That's what Hope Dollar Ride does very well, by the way. They have the those school contracts. That's it? Okay, well, I thank you. By the way, we can break off and have one-on-ones if you want. We've got almost all of council here. So feel free to ask questions that you don't want asked during this video streaming. Is that still on? Okay. So anyways, thank you very much for taking the time out. It was a beautiful day, and and appreciate you coming out.